Call to order the Thursday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Maiden Creek Township Board of Supervisors meeting. And let's stand and.
The legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approvals. Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Best two, two, zero. Motion to approve the minutes of the July tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting.
Motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any public comment on agenda items? First row. Second row. Third row. Fourth row. Back row.
I've got a comment.
Yes.
Hi, E.P. where? Um, you have on here the consideration of release of escrow for the warehouse. And it's quite obvious there's very little construction. So what have they possibly completed that would warrant the release of escrow?
Yeah, she can answer that when she gets to her.
Yeah, I have a detail.
I agree that she do, but it's obviously not available here. I mean, and the other thing is that the noise is still an issue. And even when I reported police, they said that they were not going to enforce the noise ordinance, even though they were still in like, you know, rock crushing and all of that. And my understanding is also through a right to know request that the township has not directed the police department not to enforce the ordinance. So why is Northern Berks not enforcing the noise ordinance? Um, when there's noise issues at work at night? Do you know?
Uh, other than, my understanding was when, when they were getting calls, uh, one officer was sitting in the cemetery right next to the construction and didn't hear a whole lot of noise. And another one was out by your house and.
He did hear it at my house.
Yeah, he said he could barely hear it.
But the noise ordinance says specifically that if it's audible, it's a violation of the noise ordinance because of, of the mile distance. And he did hear it at my house. So if you hear it at my house, you hear it at other, like, other people's houses.
So you think the court is going to find somebody just because you actually hear it? And it doesn't disturb you other than the fact that the warehouse is being built?
No, you need to read the noise ordinance. Specifically, noise ordinance says that if there's noise due to construction, whatever, after ten P.M., then it's, it's a violation of the township noise ordinance. And you don't have to take an audible meter reading or anything like that. It's just simply if somebody can hear it. So I'm sure the solicitor could give you more information what noise ordinance says, but that's what it says. It's pretty straightforward.
We'll talk with this one later then. Thank you.
Well, no, but I think it's important that the noise ordinance be enforced to not selectively allow certain companies or whoever to violate the ordinance. And then it's such a fair recipe.
Thanks for your comment. Okay. Northern Berks.
I got that.
Regional police. They did have a meeting on Monday and Dave has a report for us.
Okay, for the July two thousand twenty-five activity report, calls for service in Maiden Creek were four hundred and fifty-eight calls. Um, there were fifty-one citations issued, fifty-one traffic warnings, seventy-nine vehicle contacts in total. There were four, uh, criminal arrests, crashes. There were nineteen, that being four reportable, fourteen non-reportable, and one hit and run. Uh, they accumulated four thousand six hundred and five miles for patrol, um, nine hundred and fifty hours of, uh, of service for the month. Uh, thirty-one of those were day hours. And that's important. They also had, uh, National Night Out. I've got to say that there was a tremendous, uh, a tremendous group of people there. And we packed it this year. They're saying like over five thousand people were there, and I believe that. Uh, our fire company, the ambulance, um, our parks and, and rec crew was there and they, they all did a terrific job. All the volunteers we want to thank that came out. Donna, you were there. You know, we had so many people there and you were there. You know, it was just packed. So, you know, it was, it was tremendous and we want to thank everybody who participated. You know, the community members were, that I've talked to since then were, were really elated by the, uh, by the showing of people and the, the participation of everybody who was there. It was a nice night. So we, you know, we're going to be looking at next year, uh, starting up soon again. So you get a chance to see the fire equipment, the ambulances, the police. And not only that, but the agencies, the five agencies that participated. There were also state police there, fish and game. You had the game commission. There were a whole lot of people that were there. Through, uh, two helicopters flew in and landed, one flew by early, uh, for military. So, you know, probation and parole, churches, hospitals. There were a whole lot of people that were there and, uh, it makes for a great event. Plus, everything was free. Food was great. Uh, I didn't get a walking taco this year because they walked right out the door first thing.
Sure did.
Yeah, they were to go and they went. So thank you one and all, and we appreciate your support for National Night Out. National Night Out, for those who aren't aware, began in Pennsylvania back in the seventies and it just grew from there. So it was a get to know, like, your, your local community police and things like that. And it really has grown into something that, uh, is actually a pretty good community event today. I mean, I wish I would have thought of it, uh, because it's a real good way for people to reach out and, and see what's going on. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Engineering and zoning reports. Pamela.
Okay. If you're important, then come back to the escrow release for the warehouse. Note, the planning commission meeting for August twenty-seventh will be canceled. We're in our plans and we need you to look at the source water protection ordinance. Remember that for the Overly district for the two, um, zone ones and two, as well as the enforcement proceedings, which have to be very strict and stick. So it's now in your court.
Got it.
And then that way, hopefully September, we can have maybe a plan on the agenda as well as, um, if they do the zoning, maybe they do a zoning hearing application for that. Former Redners, that planning commission should wait on that. So it might, it might be something, we're hoping, uh, in the ordinance. So I just wanted to get everybody updated. That's, should be hopefully something in September. Nothing else. Hopefully the other plans that are the subdivision will, you know, right by the circle there, it's Schaefer. Hopefully those subdivision plans will be recorded soon. We approved them last month. We are in process for the next series of just seven basins to be inspected as we go through the, the five years of the N.S. or E.D.S. that N.S. worked. Melrose Place. Agenda is, is it still tabled? I have the update, which is in your packet. We did go investigate three oh four and three oh eight Sophia as requested. We didn't see a banking failure, so I'm, I'm not, I don't see anybody here. Do you?
No. Not, not from, not new residents.
Twenty-four hours.
Oh, there he is. Wow, come on forward, please. You're hiding.
Yes.
So we didn't see anything for that complaint. I know that we had discussed it last month, but said there was a complaint. We tabled it to make sure that we looked at this other specific complaint. I'm not finding, I was wondering if the pictures in the person that investigated, we did not think there was any banking failure. And I hope you agree for the photos that there was.
Yep.
So at this point, again, I want to make my request for the release of the remainder of the escrow. Um, it was reduced in two thousand nineteen. Everything was completed in two thousand twenty. Uh, post-construction stormwater management report was done by D.E.P. in January of two thousand twenty. Um, I know there were some ongoing issues. We've always been, um, responsive to the request to remediate and whatnot. And one basin is owned by Lydia Folino up front. And now they have a service agreement every week. The gentleman goes out, cuts the grass, empties out the entrance. He has a key to the, the, there's like a key thing in part of it. We have to leave that out. Um, we did tell him that if there's a, a raining event, come after that. I think he's been doing that as part.
Listened.
Yeah. So, um, and I do think this client has listened to the, the request in the past and has remediated it. Inspections have done, have been done, close remediations every single time. So at this point, I just want to renew my request to release the remainder of the escrow.
So it is under my thing on the, her report now. We can move it up. I have no problem if you want to act on it now or leave it under mine.
Might as well bring it up.
Okay, so, so it is my recommendation. I looked through all the paperwork. It originally came up in June for the public. I wasn't here last month. However, I did give a report to the board of what, looking at the document showed, and Mr. Folino was correct, that the project was done in two thousand nineteen. And when that's done, the esc, the development escrow gets released and they enter into a maintenance period. Typical maintenance period is eighteen months. On this project, I don't know why it was two thousand nineteen. They actually did a thirty-six month maintenance period. That maintenance period ended in two thousand twenty-one. Since then, these basins have been inspected several times by S.D.E. And I believe each time, if something was wrong, uh, the developer came out and did it. The one basin has now been turned over to the H.O.A. The other commercial basin is with the developer, and Mr. Folio is correct. The commercial one is being done correctly all the time, I believe. Haven't been any issues with that one. There's been complaints about the other basin. However, it is the H.O.A.'s responsibility at this point in time to take over the maintenance of that. It's no longer on the developer. So it is my recommendation that you have to release this money at this point in time.
What is the exact amount?
Forty.
Forty, how are you?
I have it here too.
I.
Forty-three, two sixty-two, ten. Was, it was the right amount at a certain point in time. I don't know if it's increased by, uh.
There's some interest on it.
Price of interest, yeah.
So it's, it's a few dollars off of that.
So I would say we're at approximately forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. So, but we're, we're going to release the full escrow.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
I have a question before your motion.
Let's get a motion on the table. So you know what? Because they may be, they may be saying, they may disagree with me and turn it down and you may not care. Let them do a motion, then we'll open it up to the public, so.
Do I have a motion to release the escrow request for Melrose Place escrow in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents, plus any additional interest? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
All second.
Okay, now.
Uh, since you weren't here, it's also word two eighty-four, West Wall Street. Uh, since you weren't here, let's me, there was a resident that brought up stating that there was some legality and, uh, lawsuit involved with this. Has that been settled to your knowledge?
No.
It hasn't?
No.
So then how can you justify releasing this money?
There's two different, two different matters here, so.
No, I understand the issue. I, I got the whole thing.
So let me, if you allow me to answer your question, so.
Go ahead.
This escrow is so that the township can make sure that that basin stayed maintained for thirty-six months. That's what it's for. It's not in perpetuity. We don't get to hold it forever. That thirty-six months ended August eleventh of two thousand twenty-one, four years ago.
Within that thirty-six months, there were issues, correct?
Correct. And what happened, S.D.E. since then has gone out, inspected it, and they fixed those issues, okay? Several times.
Okay, let me ask you this. Do you have documentation from S.A.D. that shows that they've been there?
Yeah.
Okay. I think you get them at a late date, Duncan.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folino. Complete.
In my, in my report, yes, please. Regarding the maintenance of the large basin that was under jurisdiction. And Diane asked me to put this in the report because she was not going to be present tonight and to bring it up to your attention and ask your, what the board should do at this time because of the complaint, the lack of maintenance. So I'm bringing it up with Diane and her, you know, we saw it, so.
I think that the issue there is the H.O.A. believes it's the developer's responsibility. Developer says they turned it over to H.O.A. So it's really a, at this point, it's a fight between two private property owners, not the township. So, um, not to say we won't get involved to support one or the other, but, um, at this point, we're not really involved in that litigation or any complaint that's going on.
Should a letter be penned by the township to the H.O.A. that it is a civil matter or what do you personally do?
Fuss, yeah. I think we've been in contact with them already. I think they know that, but we could document it.
Because they were requesting recommendations for people to move. So that tells me that the H.O.A., and from what I understand from H.O.A., some H.O.A. members that they understand it's their, now their responsibility and that it hasn't been maintained, but the H.O.A. will going forward.
So maybe we'll advise them of this release and then.
Yeah.
Ensure that they know it's their responsibility.
What recourse does the township have? So that's what I'm asking.
Right.
Because they asked that question.
It's neighbor versus neighbor.
And frankly, here too, there's infighting with the H.O.A. themselves. So, so it's maybe neighbor against neighbor internally and then that group with the developer. So, um, but it's not with the township.
Correct.
So. Okay, so moving on, uh, Cornerstone Bridge. Um, moving forward, we had a bob turtle hit. So, yeah. I, well, it's always amazing where they, those dumb turtles show up.
Did it get bogged down?
I think it did get very bogged down, yeah.
Sorry, where was this? I didn't hear what you said.
The Cornerstone Bridge.
Cornerstone Bridge. Yeah, Cornerstone Bridge. Um, and the UGI gas main, they're relocating outside of the whole construction. So that's good news. The, I'll call it the parts. The bridge was ordered, is my understanding. So it's in shop drawing process and we're all approved, so it's, it's moving. So hopefully the permit will align with the delivery and we can put it out for bid and start construction. That's good news for that. And two thousand twenty-five roads to start, uh, August eighteenth for everybody, Keith?
Is that Tuesday?
Monday, Monday's the eighteenth.
No, they pushed it back to Tuesday.
Thank you. Glad we talked.
They had a slight rate delay, so, um, they will start Tuesday.
And H.I.F. or H.G.K. They're just.
Yeah, they, they'll be fine for they're getting caught up.
So it would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday until Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday they'll do their notching and stuff like that. They'll prep work and then hopefully Wednesday they'll start their actual paving projects.
So just so everybody knows, what are the roads they need to avoid?
Um, East Wester between Route seventy-three and Park Road and Goulden Road in between East Wester and Park. And the other section of Goulden Road right by Stone Creek from the railroad tracks, a little past Grove. So those roads will be closed down while they're paving, so best to find an alternate route for those couple days.
And the gas company is all done up there, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want having to go in there and dig again, huh?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, what's with the car?
Moving forward, we have a stormwater complaint at one twenty-nine Sterling, a very strange situation. I don't know if you saw that, but there's a parallel swale that's actually along the fence lines, not the center of the easement. So the gentleman gets, when it rains, he gets this whale that really wasn't supposed to be there directing the stormwater into his fence line before it finally gets into the easement. So it's, like you said, stormwater civil matter. If he wants that corrected, he'd have to coordinate and ask his neighbor to degrade it to be the center of the easement. So we did our due diligence. It's nothing that, that the easement's not wrong, you're grading and the easement's not wrong. It was a very surprising discovery. That was, that was interesting. So that, um, we're done with that complaint as well. And now we get to the Main Creek Associates escrow reduction number one. The items that are in there are clearing, uh, road sediment and erosion control, a little bit of artwork, uh, portion of the retaining wall, uh, storm sewer work for different portions in the site, a small portion of that. And then, uh, construction contingency for a total amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents again. Total amount, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents. We have in front of you the realized paper one, uh, because there was an M.P.C. interpretation and we've heard from the attorney. I have the new and improved two thousand twenty-two M.P.C. I found the section. I still, it says may to me, not shall, so I still. I, I arrow on the side of caution as always. I try to hold as much in the escrow, but your solicitor agreed with it and his solicitor rendered the opinion. I waved my white flag saying, okay, there's your numbers. So I would need a motion to authorize that release and that amount. And if, um, if his vice chairman could then sign that, then I will take that original and mail it to M.T. for the release.
And you feel that everything's been met?
For the public's benefit, what's remaining in the escrow to ensure that the project does get done is three million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents. So there is still a substantial amount that we're holding to make sure the project gets done. So, yeah, I just do, that's, that's not what they're going to be interested in.
No, it's great.
So they have met their requirements thus far.
Yes, now, there were some adjustments and we're asking for certain quantities we didn't agree with, but that's why we're out there in the field to document everything. So, uh, we are very comfortable with the release, that's requested.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we release seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, eighteen cents on the, uh, Main Creek Warehouse Associates Letter of Credit, uh, brother.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question on even when you turned around and go, I did. How many of you intervals will they have to come forward to get the additional?
They can do it every month.
Every month?
And that's why I see it, it's very normal to project.
I've got it constructed for forty years. How much does the township hold, quiet and finishing?
So whatever's not done, we hold. So everything's a line item. So if, if there's two hundred feet of linear curve, if they finish twenty feet of it, we still hold what's up to a hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty feet, we still hold.
And ten percent.
And plus ten percent of what's remaining. So a hundred and ten percent of what's remaining, we hold.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Sign that and have done the question. Thank you so much. Is there any other questions? That's all I have in my report for this evening.
Okay. Solicitor.
I already did my one item. I just want to apologize again for being late. It's not like me, so I was driving up the road. I was going to stop for gas. I'm like, wait, I already have four minutes to get there. I'm going to be late. So again, I apologize to everybody.
All right. Public Berks, Keith.
So Pamela already covered our annual road paving, so we covered that. We are presently on our road patching, specifically Martin, Litburg, Sunset, you know, those areas down there. And we did make improvements to the drop off site, which I think everybody is happy about and is going to be working really well tomorrow, so.
Anything on the lights? The electric lights, streetlights?
As far as?
There were some that were out there.
Yes, I got to a few, not all. So that'll be next week also. So I'll just continue to work with this.
Okay, thank you.
Done it? Keith? Parks and Rec, Mr. Rogers.
First thing I had was for, uh, we'd like to get a community board installed at Community Park. We don't currently have anything there. I think it'd be nice to, um, have one installed. I sent Diane a picture of kind of what I've written, you know, something like that.
A manual one?
Just like this, where I can, we can post like flyers and information and stuff like that. Yeah. Something that general range.
Oh, so nothing at the road?
No, that would be at, in, in the park, probably like right by where Pickball kind of is, as towards the edge there. Yeah, just, you know, something that folks can, when they come to the park, they can see what commitments we have for the park recreation. Also some other information that may be apartments of the park or just one of the township.
Right, regulations.
Yeah. And then also was interested in maybe grabbing a couple of these for promotion of the events. I was thinking about having one like at the road here, at the road to park, and perhaps at that intersection of Park and seventy-three. Just something like that as an idea to help promote, um, also our activities as we do Flea Market, Food Truck Fridays, really nice stuff. But yeah, just additional, um, you know, promotion. Because it's, it's, you know, we have social media, the township website, all, but having signs on the road and that, what they, that one comes with a stand, the sign, the numbers, not letters. So, you know, that's something that could work just for consideration, um, for those two items.
Is it angerable or green?
That I don't know, but that's just like an example of what I was looking for. We can look around.
It's a temporary.
I would make sure you, you see, because they stole, they stole all lines from chicken.
Yeah, that's why you have that chicken bar, they take down.
And that's security to the ground by, by chains and everything else. They stole that shit.
There's many, yeah, there's many various, so we can take a look at that. But just as an idea, something like that, that's something I would look for.
If, if you want to, if you want to look for something and you can have some prices for us, uh, for next meetings, that would be.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Yeah, okay. Not even a good idea. Yeah, just, we're getting pretty busy with parks now, so I figured, you know, more promotion, the better.
Is that it?
Nope, uh, I got a couple. New, new. Next is the Veterans Memorial. The Lions Club has generously, uh, came forward to donate some money towards it. So, uh, at this point, we're just looking to get some design work for what the township wants to do there at the community park and to get some numbers so that, um, that the Lions Club can take it to their board and get an idea of, you know, a donation help. Anthony brought a couple of things for me today.
No, you didn't.
Okay. He gave some photos. This is kind of, I think, where we want to go as far as the stone. It would be larger than that, but if you wanted to have all the branches of the military in just one singular stone. And this is what the Lions Club currently have.
That's what we have at the Grove now.
Yeah.
You would probably get a bigger one, but.
But that's what we're looking at as far as the stone would look like.
That's nice.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to donate and we're looking to donate, uh, a yearly donation for the upkeep of the, of the area too. So I just need a plan of what's going to happen so you can get, the board already approved it. I just need to show them so they can approve the money.
I believe Josh is, he's working on something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's our design engineer.
And then he also gave his, uh, information for a company that does the bricks. Uh, he said it's about nineteen dollars a brick or so. So if we do a donation, if we do a, like a donation drive where we, um, as a public, they would like to donate, we can set an amount for it, and then I can create a Google Drive so that they can sign up to.
Sponsor a brick.
Sponsor a brick. Um, and then this company, we would just, we could use them, they would ship it all to us and we wouldn't, you know, have to do much of that. So that's just an option. I'll send all that information to Diane then.
What if Glenn Gary would, uh, make a donation?
That's what I was thinking too.
Right up in shoemakers though.
Then we have to. Then we have to. And then we'd have to engrave it, so they would, should, they would have it's, the brick and the engraving and everything.
We've done it at the Grove, so if you want to go to the Grove, you'll see the, by the flagpole, it's a memorial, because we have bricks in there that we've done, and they do a really good job.
Okay.
I figure between with the Lions Club generously donating and a fundraiser for the bricks would probably more than cover the cost of the project.
Right.
And Josh knows a landscaper, that he was going to hit up.
Yeah, there might be some landscapers who may, maybe would donate some material or labor or something like that, so, yeah. So that's just an update on that, what they're looking to do. We just have some upcoming events, first one is movie night, which is next Friday, seven thirty at the Community Park, we'll be showing the Minecraft movie. Right, at this point, I have scheduled Pop's Malt Shop, they have a nineteen sixties retro ice cream truck that'll be on site selling ice cream, sundaes, shakes and sweet treats, I have a young man who has his own little lemonade business, he's a miner, he sells lemonades, so he'll be there, and then I believe Trinity Bible will also be there handing out popcorn to everybody. So weather looks good at this point, so fingers crossed it stays that way, but should be a really nice event for us. In September, we have Food Truck Fridays, at this point, I have three vendors per Friday in September, at least, the nineteenth I had five that night. So they've all agreed to donate ten percent of proceeds to the park recreation, the Main Creek, and they'll be there from four PM to seven PM, every Friday in September, so the fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth. And then after that will be the Flea Market slash Craft Show, that'll be at the Community Park from ten P, ten AM to two PM, we changed the time, we bumped it up a little bit later. I have Munchies Food Truck and the Perk Up Truck scheduled to be there during that timeframe, they'll also be donating ten percent of what they sell to the township, and as of right now, I have thirty-one vendors signed up.
How's that compared to last one?
I believe, well, the one in April, we, we had, I think, like fifteen, and then the one prior to that, I believe, was nineteen, that was just strictly Flea Market, and I think I ended up only having sixteen show up, so, I found a bunch of Facebook pages that do craft vendors, and so I've been blasting it over there, so we're definitely getting a lot more signed up, so, each of them will pay fifteen dollars per spot, so, just, you know, that'll go to the Township Parks Department to help fund our activities that we do. And so that's the upcoming events, and the last thing is, I figure we'll, we should probably start to talk about the semi quintessential, semi-quincentennial, sorry, for next year, I know that we want to try to have a celebration for that, so just want to maybe have you guys think of some things that we can do for that, and how you kind of want us to attack that time wise, you know, we have food trucks now in the township, we have other events, so do something to think about, you know, so we can start the planning process, because it'll take a little while, so. If you have any ideas, let us know, we're looking to it, and we'll start planning and hopefully have something really nice for that time.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Aaron.
Thanks for what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Diane is on vacation, so she doesn't have a report to give tonight. Under new business, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution twenty-one dash two zero two five entering into the MS four steering committee agreement?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is a vacancy on the planning commission, and two residents expressed interest, and this term will end at the end of this year, so it's just for the duration of the current term that Matt was holding. So do I have a nomination slash motion for a, one of the candidates to serve for the rest of this calendar year on the Main Creek Township Planning Commission?
I'm going to make a motion for Dan Brown, Anthony, it's, we've got a couple things coming up that I think you might be able to help us with in the future.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approve closure of the Hope, of Hope Road November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five for one hour for a five K run sponsored by Boy Scout Troop one oh three of Fleetwood.
I'll make a motion, we close Hope Road on November fifteenth for the, the five K run.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, approve payment of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents to Med Ed for design and construction of the Cornerstone Bridge. This is, I guess, for them to move their, their lines out of the creek, so we can continue with the construction of the bridge and not hold anything up.
Yeah, and Promire Report was on hold, so it's nice to see that it's moving forward, so we will coordinate, we should have a payment, but we'll give them an email saying, you know, it's our understanding that payment was authorized, so if you need anything from SDE, so that we can help them keep moving as well, so I can do that too.
So you need a motion from us to authorize you to?
No, we're doing that as part of the.
Project.
As the project.
So you just need us to approve?
You're approving that, because that's their relocation cost.
Right.
In the public right way, it's in their tariff. And when you have a PUC and it's in their tariff.
No fight.
No, your hands are tied, I see Eric, yes, so, some, some of them have it, some of them don't, in this case, Med Ed had it unbunst to the township.
They've never, they've never charged us before for anything like this, I checked, so, but we also have some permits we require that we hadn't been charging them, so we'll be able to reciprocate. I'll make a motion to approve payment of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents to Med Ed for the design and construction for the Cornerstone Drive Bridge.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lastly.
No, I'm saying thank you, so we can keep.
Keep moving it.
Financial matters, approval of bills and acceptance of the treasurer's report as presented, do I have a motion? Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll now open it up to public comment on non agenda items. First row, second row, third row, fourth row, back row.
Any questions, Charles Oakwood? In reference to warehouse, since our taxes were doubled, does that also allow the warehouse taxes to double as far as the income at the township, what we see?
Once they complete, and my understanding is once they complete and are opened up and occupied, we'll see the, the result of the, the taxes to roll in.
I understand that, originally they were going to contribute about fifty-eight, fifty thousand in tax base, so will that double because our taxes doubled?
My taxes do.
My taxes?
I don't want taxes doubled, but whatever, if your taxes, if your taxes, real estate taxes.
Milage wise, they doubled, because.
Milage could, it's applicable, so a couple things will happen here, so if theirs would have gone up the same rate yours did currently.
That's what I'm asking.
And then Dave was saying is that after they get built, they will get reassessed, not just their land value, but that would be reassessed as to the value of the building, theirs is going to more than that, theirs is going to go up significantly.
That's one question.
So, and the double, whatever the mileage is, is going to apply towards that value of the building as well, and the land together.
Right.
And don't they also pay business privilege tax to the school district?
They will get a school district tax and they'll also county, so, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
They weren't given any special.
No.
Why didn't you say that?
Yeah, sometimes they have like ten years of.
Uh, they get taxed, that's correct, I'm well aware of that.
I haven't seen that requested, this, because I can tell you, school district reached out to me, and I'm like, they haven't raised anything that we know of.
Well, maybe some, could they have requested once the project's done?
I know they answered that, but I don't think so either, I think they have that all lined up, headed back.
From the get-go, I think that was the understanding, that they would not do that.
Aye.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.